Like to call to over the July 21st, 2020 special call meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and I'll call the role Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Here.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson is here. Mr. Maslow, we had comments today.
Yeah, I just want to recognize our finance department for receiving a couple of GFOA awards again. We just got word that we received the certi- certification of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for FY19 on our CAFER. That was for 630, 2019. We will be submitting our 2020 CAFER soon. We've also gotten word that we received the award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting. That's the colorful report that we put out at the end of the year. If that's for FY19 as well. So very proud of Katie and our finance department for getting those awards once again. I don't know how many years in a row we've gotten these, but to me, these sort of an accreditation for the most part of our financial where all in our finance department that we're, we're doing things the way we're supposed to be doing them. And our financial reporting is up to speed and, and in accordance with governmental finance requirements. So thank you to the finance department and great job.
Here, here.
Appreciate that hard work. The next item is approval of revised minutes that were sent out for our special meeting on July 21st, 2020.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I needed to make one comment in there during the city manager section. Is that okay?
No, if it's not on the agenda. I'm sorry that we're in the, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes.
I didn't realize there were revised minutes.
So moved.
Second, yes, I'm sorry. It came out the last couple of minutes right before the meeting with the, just a minor change from Dana.
One moment, please, and if I can just look at that real quick. I didn't realize it came out.
Sure. Please review and those, are there any other comments or questions? You good?
I'm good. Thank you.
I'll call the role Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Item for consideration, our municipal order 2020 109. Municipal order approving the promotions of Pamela Booth of the Parks and Recreation Department and Angela McCarley of the Human Resources Department to the position of office associate. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Carrigan, Mr. Maslow.
This is part of our promotional process for office associates. Both of these ladies have passed their tests and we are recommending the, the upgrade to office associate two Pamela Booth in Parks and Angela McCarley in HR.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call her own Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. Next is municipal order 2020 110. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2020 62 for Small House Road Multi-Use Path. Professional services from Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated of Paducah, Kentucky in the amount of $118,090. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Carrigan, Mr. Maslow.
This is the project you all discussed at retreat that you, you did want to continue with a multi-use path, path along Small House Road. We did go out for bid. We received five bids here. I think it was an evaluated bid and five proposals were submitted and we're recommending Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering Testing in the amount of 118090. They partner up with HMB Professional Engineers for Property Acquisition Services. And we have found out that they are, have been used with Kentucky cabinet. Actually, one of their employees is a former transportation cabinet employee. So they'll be working with the property owners on acquisition. And they were best suited for this job. And Greg is on here with us, can answer any questions that you might have.
Any comments or questions? Slim?
Greg, will you remind the citizens why we decided to go with a walking path as opposed to widening the road?
Sure, yes. The, the walking path in that area in particular was to help that population, those residential areas to be able to have access to a park. Currently they're, they're kind of cut off in terms of a multi-use path in order to get to a park. This way they can go, you know, up to Scottsville Road, the Broadway to cross over to be able to get to Covington Woods Park to be able to enjoy and to use that. The reason that we didn't do any widening, particularly on the Scottsville Road end, was because of the proximity of the businesses and some of the residences. It was so close that if we went in to try to widen and, and to do any lane and extra capacity work, that we would end up taking a lot of those, you know, and that would have been a very expensive for one undertaking and disruptive to that community, we thought, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll call the role Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Anything? Nash?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020 111. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2020 63 for Cisco Smartnet Annual Renewal from Trace III LLC of Irvine, California in the amount of $97,000, $92, $97,092.54. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Carrigan, Mr. Maslow.
This is an annual maintenance agreement for our Cisco equipment that includes all the kind of things, switches, firewalls, phone system, on and on. We went out for bid, got seven bids, as you can see in your packet, and one was non-responsive. But we are going and recommending the Trace III LLC out of California at the low bid of $97,092.54. And this would cover us for a year for all of our Cisco equipment.
Any comments or questions? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that we had, you know, a couple of local bidders and the difference between the bidder in California, the one we're going with, and one of the local ones a little over 3,000. And I think that, you know, we can't go with this local company, especially when this is, you know, an industry that I think we're going to need to try and help, you know, get started in Bowling Green and flourish in Bowling Green as our economy is more dependent on technology and then the IT field. I think any time that we can support local IT, we really should try to do that. So if someone could just remind me of our current bidding policies and sort of what hinders us from being able to select this local company? And yeah, so if someone could remind me of those barriers we have that to do that.
I'll, I'll start and Jean and Katie can, can help me out here, but our, our local preference rule is only on services and not commodities. So we have it backwards. Have it backwards. It applies to commodities and professional services. And so it did not apply in this case. If we were, were buying these things, these items, it would have kicked in at, I think, 5%. And I still don't know that that would have been close enough. Wouldn't quite have, have made it with the difference between the 10495 and the 97092, even if it had applied, but it did not apply in this situation.
Sue?
Can I say a word? I, I think we ran into this one other time before and we talked about, you know, doing a sort of a local preference. Do we remember that, Katie? We, we had quite a long conversation about it. And, and, you know, I'm still in favor of, of buying local when we can and, and maybe taking a look at how we might, I, I, it seemed like it was going to be very, very complicated. We, we had a lot of conversation about doing that local preference for not just services, but also for commodities. And, and we had a, we had a developer miss a million dollar building by like a thousand dollars. And it just seemed, yeah. I'm still in favor of the conversation and moving towards being able to have local option for these types of, of services if possible. I mean, if it's doable, we should.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, especially in industries that we're trying to grow like IT, it just makes sense to support that when we can.
Well, I, I wouldn't be in favor of just certain industries because that's sort of discriminating against others in a way. I think all, if it's either all or none, either we do away with it altogether or we add everybody to be able to participate locally.
Katie, did you have?
Sue's two cents.
Katie, did you have a comment?
We did have the discussion about this at a past retreat. I can't remember if it's the fall retreat. I think it was the last fall retreat we had. And we did talk in detail. It, it is complicated. There are no other communities offering local preference. You get into some territory that we need to be cautious about when we're looking at local preference. We also had talked about the specific definition currently of local preference that that business entity had to be located within the city limits. So when the construction contract came up before that particular business was not technically located in the city limits, it was in the county, but not in the city. But this particular product is a service. It's not a commodity. So our current policies do not apply for local preference on this particular bid. And even if it had, according to the particular levels of preference that we allow, it would not have fallen within that, so it would not have made a difference. The bids were too far apart in price. It's just a straight low bid at this point.
Okay, any, any other comments? I'll call the role Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Joe.
Can I ask a question? With the list that Katie and Marilyn sends out every day pertaining to bids, say someone not in this particular business submitted it, submitted a bid that was lower than this one. Would we give that company an opportunity to provide those services based on the bid list? In other words, the list that goes out to bidders is a list of names of every Tom, Dick and Harry. Automobile lots, et cetera, and et cetera. Would those individuals be able to bid on something like this from that list?
We, we send out a list to the individuals that have subscribed to receive this specific type of information. We can distinguish between different types of, of business opportunities. And so those that have signed up to receive this bid can then receive it and bid. We would want to qualify that bidder and make sure they can provide whatever it is that they bid on. So we would verify that. So if that, if a business that isn't normally in that world tried to bid on something, as long as they can provide the product and we have a qualified response from them, then yes, if they're the low bid, we could go with them. But if it's a company that has absolutely nothing to do with IT, as an example, and they have no qualified background to provide that service, then, then we would not, that would not be a responsive bidder.
But all bids, mission, all bids, all bids are advertised. They're not just sent to a select group. They're still advertised on our website. So anybody that has access to our website sees our outstanding bids and they've got the ability to bid. This is what Katie said, they have to be responsible and responsive bidder. But we don't, we don't narrow our list down and send it just to select people. The people get it who sign up for our list, they get advance notice, but it's advertised for everybody.
Could, could you have a situation where John Doe come to bid, but he was going to sub the work out to a major player in the business? What would happen in a case like that?
Well, I think we get quite a few bids where we have subs doing some of the work. I think we'd have to look at again and make sure that they're submitting a responsible and responsive bid. And if whoever is in the department is okay with that company subbing some of that work out, because, you know, we get a lot of construction contracts knows they subbed part of the work out. So I'm not sure that'd be a, you know, I'm not too sure if we want an IT service one where they served it all out. You know, that, that may be a question whether we want to approve something like that. But I think you'd have to look at each one probably on a case by case basis to see how much work that contractor is going to do, how much they're subbing out, what they're subbing out, and make a determination whether they're responsible bidder.
With, Katie, was this bid that we're talking about, was it a evaluated bid or just low, low price?
The IT bid was strictly low price. The, the previous bid that we had discussed was evaluated. The one that Greg responded to. On the multi-use path, that was an evaluated bid, but the IT bid was straight low bid.
Joe's concerns would be legitimate if, if a car dealer bid a low price, couldn't deliver.
We, we would follow up and make sure. In fact, Lynn had followed up with this company because we had not used them before. He verified that they can provide this particular service to us and that they are qualified responsive, responsible bidder.
This, this type-
If you said it wasn't qualified, it was low bid.
Well, it, it's a low bid as long as they meet our specifications. They still have to meet the specifications of the bid.
Okay, okay. That's, that's what I guess I was trying to get at, so Jeff?
In this case, this type case, we narrowly spec the bid to where it's, it's all apples to apples where we're bidding out for a maintenance on Cisco equipment. So they have to have Cisco certifications or whatever and show, prove that they can work on Cisco equipment. So it's tightly specced in the proposal or the bid. And that way we can just do low bid and we don't have to evaluate it. We can do that in some cases. In some cases in professional services, it's harder to do and it's more of a vast scope of something you're looking for. This is a narrow scope that we're looking for. And so Lynn was able to spec it out pretty narrow and, and we got to where we could just do low bid.
Joe, did that get it cleared up for you?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't call on you earlier. Municipal order 2020 112. Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for Federal Fiscal Year 2020 Transportation Assistance under the CARES Act. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Carrigan, Mr. Maslow.
We requested and got word that we could get 3.4 million dollars out of the first stimulus bill, I think it was, the first CARES Act from FTA. And so we have been awarded this 3.4 million for our transit system, for operating and planning assistance, even capital to assist, prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. We are wanting to accept this money to put toward our new transit program and put it to work.
Any questions?
Required on this.
Any questions or comment? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to find out what the process will be in terms of how we decide to spend this CARES money and I guess how it'll be reported back to us when we decide how we're going to allocate it.
We are still looking at what all the requirements are for what's eligible to be spent on it. Brent Childers is working on that. And we can come back to it at a later point with that. Just, we were just trying to grab the money right now and accept, accept this grant. But we can get back to you later on the details of what, what we think is going to be eligible. We're hoping we can, we can do some capital stuff like bus stops and things like that. And also help as far as the operating management agreement, go toward paying for that going forward. So Brent's looking at all those rules along with Nick under the CARES Act. So we'll be back to you with that or I'll have Brent or Nick send out more details once we nail down what we can spend it on.
I just, thank you.
I don't know this for sure, but I'll, my guess is ridership is way down. So revenues are going to be way down on transportation. And, and I can't imagine there's any shortage of need for funding for our transportation organization. May, maybe as we look at how to spend it, we can get a, a mid-year report on ridership. My guess is it's way down.
We, we now have a transit manager that we hired from the outside that's working out of Brent's office. And soon hopefully to be working out of the, the substation on 11th and Center, working on setting up an office there for him. And he's with RTP Dev, the company that we, we hire for management of the transit system. So we'll be leaning on that company for guidance as well. We also have, Brent also has another consultant that he still has, I think, on retainer that can, can give us advice on what this money can be spent on, that helps us do the RFP and get the transit contract in place.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll call the role Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes.
Mayor? I have a point of clarification on municipal order 2020-111.
Okay.
Did, did we finish the roll call on that? You were in the midst of the roll call. Commissioner Denning had some questions. I don't remember if we finished and I just wanted to make sure that we did.
We finished the roll call. Did I miss a question from you, Joe?
No, no. Earlier, earlier you were calling the roll and Joe had some questions. And, and Joe's not the-
I think his que- Joe's question was after the roll call before the next item.
Thank you.
Next item is municipal order 2020 113. Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for Federal Fiscal Year 2020 Transportation Assistance under the section 5307 and 5339 programs. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Carrigan, Mr. Maslow.
This is our normal annual FTA allocation for 5307 and 5339 that we get annually for, for transit. We've, we've gotten this since 2003, since we're an urbanized area. And so we're getting a million, 153, 403 for the 5307 operating side. And then we're getting another 130,414 for the capital side, which is the 5339. There is a 50% local match for the operating side and a 20% match required for the capital side. So Nick's, Nick's and Brent's memo here explains that on down through there. And we, we are still getting the, the toll credit. I can't explain what a toll credit is, but it does help offset the match and helps us out a little bit. In addition, the state had awarded the city the 64980 in the capital management for FY12 as well. So again, we're working with RATP Dev, our transit management contractor on this and we'll put this money to work as well.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the role Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning? Nash?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Municipal order 2020 114. Municipal order authorizing the filing of a coronavirus relief fund application for reimbursement of incurred expenses in the CRF funds with the Department of Local Government and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by DLG to reimburse the city of Bowling Green and further authorizing the mayor to act as the authorized correspondent for reimbursement. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Carrigan, Mr. Maslow.
We have received this money through, again, through the CARES Act stimulus. If you'll recall, the state of Kentucky got 1.7 billion dollars from the $3 trillion federal stimulus. And so the governor has allocated $300 million out of that 1.7 that they divvied up among the cities in Kentucky based on population. And so Bowling Green tabulated the 4.918,471 number as part of the 1.7 billion dollars that the state got, that the governor decided to give, split up between the cities. So the counties have their own separate allocation of, of the CARES Act money. And so we are again on this one, studying up on what we can use it on. Katie and Brent Childers and myself have been trying to look at the rules on, on this money as well. We're hoping to put some of this back into the community and waiting to see what, make sure we, we have the rules straight on what we can do with it. So we, again, this, we would just want to get the money now while it's, while we can. Go ahead and submit for it. We have expenses to, to document that we have, we are eligible to get reimbursed for this money. And Katie's been working on that and I think we're good to go on that. We're ready to submit for it, just with your approval today.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the role Beasley Brown. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood the city manager's comments. So Jeff, did you um, say that part of it will be to help reimburse the expenses that we've had as a city? Then also some of it may be provided to the community and I just wanted to check, make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah, there's a good possibility. Like, like I said, we're still want to make sure we nail down the rules, what, what we can do with, with this money. Uh, a lot of it uh, is we're going to need to reimburse ourselves on expense expenditures that we've incurred. But we're hopeful that uh, we, we can figure out ways to, to put it back out into the community.
And then who would be at the table, um, if we do have any money that's available for the community?
Uh, like I said, it would be me, Katie and Brent Childers trying to find, find the rules and, and what we can do. And then we would present a program to you guys at some point, uh, once we know what we can do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it would be, it would be most likely expenditures would be over 50,000 anyway and we would have to get your all's approval.
Got it.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Basically Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkinson is yes. Next item is Municipal Order 2020-115. Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Green Hills subdivision, motion. By Wilkinson and second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
As you know, Green Hills is one of the new uh, areas out Lover's Lane uh, that's being developed. Uh, the infrastructure has been put into place and they are ready for us to accept it under. Uh, city annex as, as part of our infrastructure. All the inspections have been completed by planning and zoning as well as our city staff. Uh, we're looking at a total of 2120 linear feet of roadway. And right away uh, with sidewalk and storm sewer. And they as well have also posted a $50,000 cash bond. For, for sections where the sidewalk is not completed along the road for lots that have not been sold. And developed. So all drainage easements uh, within the subdivision would be maintained or actually mowed. By the private property owners and of course the city would maintain the pipes and the drain. System under the stormwater program. Uh, if you have any questions, Greg here with us.
Any comments or questions?
Dana? So I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so. I've never seen one of these that were in the maintenance on a uh, subdivision where everything hasn't been constructed fully yet. And so I'm just curious about um, how that works in terms of our liability or risk that we take. Getting maintenance of something that isn't fully constructed at this point. Um, I understood you said there's a bond there, but just if you could explain a little bit more about um, adopting. Uh, responsibility for infrastructure that's not completed yet.
So yeah, I can try to take that if you want. Um, generally. Uh, you know, in a residential subdivision, for example. Uh, where, where the, where the lots are sold to individual builders. Uh, the requirement for sidewalks is completed upfront. Um, there's been some requests recently for commercial type subdivisions. Um, that uh, with the, with the commercial development of, an office space, a larger building, a box store. That the construction process would damage that sidewalk and, and we're talking particularly sidewalks here. There's no other infrastructure that we're not completing. Um, that would be damaged in that building process. So here in this particular instance, and we've done it before. Um, certainly we'd like to have all the infrastructure built at first. Um, so the, the bond is kind of a, kind of a go-between, kind of a, you know, uh. A meet you in the middle kind of thing to understand. That it doesn't make sense to have to build something and then get it destroyed and then rebuild it again. So it's um, that's where we're at on, on this one and some other commercial developments. Um, and we've chosen to accept that bond in that it's, it's enough money, plenty enough money to build that sidewalk. Uh, if we need to do it ourselves.
Thank you. Um, my follow-up question would be. I guess why do we need to go ahead and um, accept it? Why don't we just wait till it's all done? What is, what is the need to go ahead? And accept the maintenance of it?
Well, not, not speaking from the developer side, but I'm certain that they, that, that the cost of the other infrastructure, the roadway, the. The, you know, the snow removal, the street sweeping, the things that we also need to help maintain our stormwater quality. Um, they could certainly contract and do. So it's kind of a, kind of a good thing for all parties for that to be treated like a city street. Uh, now that there are, there are occu- there are folks that are occupying that, you know, and this one in particular, I think the Greenview Surgical Center is there. And so we're not really, we can't accept maintenance on something that's not there. Good point. Uh, but when it is there, then we'll, we'll accept the maintenance based upon the fact that we've got money to cover it. Should they, for some reason default on that?
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, uh, Greg, uh, when we accept. A subdivision like this. Do we actually go in there and put? Instruments on the specifics of what has already been done? In other words. Do we know that? Besides eyeballing, uh, that water damage, uh, water sheds are gonna go where they're supposed to go? Uh, do we have low spots in pavements where we're gonna have puddles of water? Uh, what do we do pertaining to things like that?
So yes, we do. We have, you know, first of all, the plans have to be. Uh, designed and approved. They have to be designed by a licensed engineer. Our planning and zoning staff, the planning commission is actually responsible. For the construction of subdivisions, for streets, for sidewalks, for drainage infrastructure. And then the city takes it over. What we do, we're, we're proactive in that though. So all the plans for. You know, storm retention to make sure the basins are big enough, to make sure the water goes where it's supposed to go. Are all approved upfront. And so the planning and zoning staff, along with some folks from, from Public Works here, go out and we inspect. Along the way as they're building the infrastructure to make sure they're doing it right. Um, there are times when after construction that there are things they need to go back and repair. They need to fix a sidewalk that's not at the proper grade. Like you said, curving gutter that may hold water in some places. We require them before we accept it uh, to go back and fix that. So. Yes.
Thank you. Slim?
Sorry, I muted my, I've unmuted myself now, I think. Uh, if I'm reading the memo correctly, it's almost a half a mile of sidewalk, is that right?
Uh, yes, what's currently there, yes.
There's a half a mile that's already there?
Yeah, uh, so the, the length of the roadway in this case. Is uh, almost 3,000 feet. And there's sidewalks on both sides of the main roadway that goes in. So as far as an exact measurement on what's there, based upon, the memo says 2,120 linear feet. Um, so yes.
Okay, but I guess.
Already there. There's still some that's missing for sure.
And does the $50,000 bond? Cover the amount of sidewalk and, and uh. Associated stormwater work that is necessary. Left to be done?
So, so the only thing left to be done is sidewalk. All the stormwater, all the retention, all the dry wells, all the water quality units are all in. So it's just sidewalk for that 50,000. So yes.
And that 50,000 will cover what needs to be done?
Yes.
And, and that is a bond that, that they already have filed or will file. So that if the developer, I'm not suggesting the developer will, but in, in, in general terms, if any developer were to walk away. Then we would have that $50,000 to immediately remedy the problem.
Yes, it's a, it's a cash bond. So yes.
Thank you.
And it's through planning and zoning. So all of our bonding and, and we've talked about this at length. Is through planning and zoning in the process of being built. They've agreed to also carry this one in terms of a cash bond forward for the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'll call the roll. Basically Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
And Wilkinson is yes. Next item is Municipal Order 2020-116. Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Burr Rock subdivision, motion by Wilkinson and. Second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
Our item, uh, residential neighborhood just up the road from uh, Green Hills, uh, requesting acceptance. Everything has been inspected by planning and zoning as well as city staff. Uh, we're looking at a little over half mile of roadway and sidewalk in this neighborhood. Stormwater, uh, storm sewer included. Everything is finished and done and uh. Uh, they're going to privately mow the uh, the drainage areas and of course the city will maintain the actual. Uh, stormwater uh, infrastructure. So. Uh, Greg can answer any question on this one you have as well.
Slim?
Greg, this goes back, I believe to Dana's earlier question. I realize this is, this is residential and not commercial. But uh, last time I drove by Burr Rock, many of the homes were not yet complete. If the roadways are damaged or sidewalks are damaged during the construction process. Who bears the financial burden of, of fixing? That damage? Is it the, the, the developer who's building the house or is it the city?
It, like we've talked about before, we'd go back to the, to the actual developer or the builder. If, if the builder had purchased a lot from the developer. Then we'd go back to them. That, your, that responsibility is on us to keep an eye on that infrastructure. Because based upon this, we're accepting it. So with that, we have to make sure that they're. Treating it correctly and they're not, they're not breaking it or causing damage that we have to go back and pay for ourselves.
And is there a bond associated with that?
There is not a bond associated with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? I'll call the roll. Basically Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkinson is yes. Municipal Order 2020-117. Municipal Order approving the Bowling Green, Kentucky Schiavellane. Extension agreement between the city of Bowling Green. And Bale of Kentucky family. Limited partnership and authorizing execution of deeds. Easements, agreements and all other actions for construction and completion of. Schiavellane corridor improvements, phases two and three, motion. By Wilkinson and second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank uh, the Bale family and their team uh, for working with Greg, Gene and, and now Hillary. On this project. They've been working on it for several months, but. As you know, we had phase two planned on Schiavellane where we were going to build from Bale Boulevard up to Middle Bridge. And then uh, we were going to have to get a little bit of land from the Bale family to do the roundabout at Middle Bridge and Schiavellane. And when they heard about that, they thought, well, why don't we go ahead and do our road at the same time? And so we got to talk, into talks with them over that. And so we, we had come to. Uh, a, 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 a good partnership here. I would say this is a, what, what do we call a good P3? Public-private partnership. Both sides have worked well together. And so where we, we're at is that we're going to go ahead and construct phase three at the same time as phase two. Uh, the Bales have agreed to give us the right of way uh, through that field where. Middle Bridge would connect over to Lover's, Lover's Lane at Circe Way. And so uh, we are buying some right of way though for the roundabout that we had to nee- that we needed. We thought a roundabout would be perfect up there at, at Middle Bridge. And uh, Schiavellane. And so we're buying roundabout. They're giving us the land for the road. Uh, they're covering the design cost though for phase three of the road. And along with the new traffic signal that would go in at the intersection of Lover's Lane and Circe. Uh, city is responsible for the construction costs for phase two and three. We're, we're already now starting to get into phase two already. And then simultaneously, uh, we would execute the deeds and easements on all the property. Annex the property as well, once everything's said and done. Uh, we've agreed to try to get construction started within a year. And uh, get everything done within an 18-month uh, timeframe. And so that's kind of the, the basics of this thing. We have in your packet, the copy of the agreement. That Gene and Hillary worked on with the Bale family attorney. Um, Greg's worked a lot on this as well. And uh, all three of here, three of them are here on the meeting uh, to answer any questions you might have, if I can answer for you.
Dana, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, just thank you everybody for working on this. This sounds like a win-win um, option. So thank you all for doing that. Uh, with some of mine, walking through the map that's in our agenda, just so I can. Get my bearing for which, where the new roads and the roundabout is.
Sure, yeah. Um, so if you look at your, you should have two exhibits. One's marked Exhibit A and one Exhibit B. Do you guys see that?
Yeah, I'm on Exhibit A now.
Exhibit A? Okay, with Exhibit A, if you look, if you're looking at it, uh, to the left side is a green portion where a roundabout is located. That's the portion of the property, not counting the straight little strip in between, that we purchased from the Bales for phase two. So the green portion of the diagram is the end of phase two. The orange and the red portion, or I guess it's kind of a, a light magenta or whatever. Portion is the phase three, which includes the connection from the roundabout at Middle Bridge. Up to Lover's Lane at Circe Way. The also, the, the magenta part is the connector to Fruit of the Loom Boulevard. So we can remove the signal. There at the end of Fruit of the, of the Loom now, there's a, a traffic signal there on Lover's Lane. Um, so that connection will allow folks from Fruit. And a lot of those are trucks, of course, coming in and out from the warehouse, to be able to access the new signal at Circe Way. So that's really the division between phase two and phase three. If you look at, at, again, Exhibit B, it goes into more detail at the roundabout there at Middle Bridge Road. The yellow portion in between is a portion that they're donating. That kind of crosses over into phase two. I know it's complicated, but, but those are what the colors mean, basically. The orange portion on Exhibit B is strictly a permanent drainage easement. It's where the water from. The roundabout construction for phase two will go. And that's also on the Bale property.
Thank you. So Middle Bridge Road goes out to Lover's Lane and then the new. I guess, is it Schiavellane is the new road? That's gonna pop out on Lover's Lane and then the Fruit of the Loom. Drive. So you're, is there going to just be one light with all of those interchanges you're saying now?
Yes. Yes.
At Middle Bridge or at?
No, it'll be at Circe in the new phase three of the Schiavellane extension. So one light kind of in the middle of those other two lights.
Okay, so on the.
The other two lights will come down if the state agrees to that. We'll just have the one signal there.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Uh, Mayor, uh. I just want to say that uh. Uh, we as a city should thank the Bale family. Uh, for always working with our city and trying to make this a better place for everyone to live. Uh, it started back with Mr. Kenneth Bale. The dad of the ones that are in the banking business here now. Uh, he was always one that was out front. Willing to come forward. And willing to. and willing to spend his money in order to make Bowling Green a place where everyone could take a look at and so that they would want to live in this community. So we owe them a lot of thanks for their business minds and for the things they've done.
I agree, Joe. Thank you for saying that. They've been really, really great. I want to add one other thing, Greg. That roundabout over there by, it's awesome. It's great. I'm over there all the time. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments?
I just want to emphasize that this is part of our strategic plan in that we're improving traffic flow throughout the city. The Chive Lane project was a key project getting from Scottsville Road over to Lover's Lane. This is a continuation of that and we're even moving it up in our schedule. And I think this is going to be a really nice project when it's all said and done and moving traffic between Lover's Lane, Scottsville Road and that area. If you're like me, I always try to, I've always tried to avoid Chive Lane during heavy traffic hours. And I think this will go a long way to improving the traffic from Fruit of the Loom, helping those employees get in and out of their corporate headquarters, as well as traffic up and down Lover's Lane and Scottsville Road. So I just, I feel like this has worked, this has worked really well so far. And we're looking forward to working with the Bales. And kudos to Greg and Gene and Hillary and all involved in this project. I was only in, and I want to thank Greg for carrying the ball and getting this across the goal line. So thank you.
One quick thing is we've been setting money aside for this for a while. Although there'll be a little bit of new money, we've been saving up to do this. It's not an entirely big purchase all at once.
That's right. No debt.
I'll call the roll. Eastly Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. In this water 2020-118. In this water accepting and adopting the operations position requirements and promotional procedures within the operations and maintenance technician job manual. Motion by Wilkerson, Second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzol.
This is a revision of our position and promotional procedures in our Public Works Operations Division. In your packets, you will see a strike, strike through a markup draft as well as a clean draft of the new plan. Greg has worked on this with Mr. Delp and I'd like to thank both of them for putting this together. In this, you'll see some changes to requirements on positions. We're trying to be leaner and meaner in many ways. Just some terminology changes throughout this document. And we're not creating any new positions, but we're revising the specialties and the requirements of certain positions in that division of what they need to be capable of doing. And I'll let Greg take it from here to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Eastly Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. The first reading of ordinance BG 2020-19. Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance rescinding Chapter 21 Public Infrastructure Rights of Land Stormwater. Subchapter 21-4 cuts excavations and work within right of way and adopting an amended subchapter motion by Wilkerson and Second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzol.
I'm going to try to give a general overview of this. I'll let Gene kind of fill in the gaps or Greg to. But we are amending Chapter 21, Subchapter 21-4 mainly for the purposes of these new small cell towers that are coming, becoming more popular. This technology where you kind of fill in these empty gaps with Wi-Fi and Internet. And so a lot of providers are starting to come into Bowling Green such as AT&amp;T and others and wanting to put these units on existing poles or even put up new poles next to another pole. And so we felt like we needed to get a handle on this. And so we basically rewrote Subchapter 21-4. I'd like to thank Melissa Kansler on her work with work on this. But basically, we are cleaning up some areas as far as street cuts, cloud what's not allowed, getting more control of that. We are proposing an increase in a permit fee in this documentation when there comes a need for work on right of way from $50 to $75. But the main emphasis on the revisions of this subchapter were for the purposes of getting the, getting a handle on the aesthetics and the control of these small cell towers and units that are going up in town now. Gene, Greg, I'll let you kind of fill in what I missed there.
No comments, Gene? Joe?
No, none.
One of the things I think all of us as elected people here in the city of Bowling Green, and we've discussed it with Greg, I think, and going all the way back to Bill Hayes. And when we talk about street cuts, you know, we've got some streets here in the city of Bowling Green. I mean, there are street cuts right after street cuts. One part looks dark, the other part is real light. And I think we have an agreement with our own utility companies to get in there and resurface that cut as soon as possible. Now, what we're looking at here today is not the same thing going to apply because we're talking about a new group of people in comparison to people we deal with every day, BGMU, Atmos, whatever the case may be. And put a timeframe on them after they've finished their initial construction to take care of our streets.
So, yeah, Joe, if I could just speak to that a bit. The requirements, the basic requirements of the street cuts don't change for whoever it is, for any, any of the local municipal utilities or those that we have agreements with or in the case of AT&amp;T, somebody that kind of preempts all that. So the timeframes for repair, for when it's inspected, that all stays the same initially. I think the only long-term change on here was the guarantee of the street cuts from five years to two years. And the reason we did that was just, there's, like you said, unfortunately, there are a lot of street cuts. If you, if you live in a city like Bowling Green that grows and changes and adds and redevelops as much as we do, there's a lot of connections you have to make. Unfortunately, a lot of our utilities are located in the middle of the street, whether that's water, sewer, or whatever. So we have to deal with that a lot. And so we found that, that most of the street cuts, most of the issues you have with the street cut are going to develop fairly quickly, within a year, basically. So in the past, we have had a lot of street cuts repaired. We've had the utility company and their contractors to come out and to dig those patches up and to repatch. So, you know, that's the only real change. In order for somebody to do work in the, in a city street, they have to have a permit. We have agreements with the franchisees and again with, with the local municipal utility providers about that. So that doesn't change.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
One other.
Go ahead.
The small cell technology, most of the time comes in through the air, through telephone, over the, over lines above the ground. And so you won't have too much damage with those. They're basically looking for an electrical source most of the time and a pole to stick them on. So we want to, BGMU is really good at coordinating with these companies and trying to work with them when there's opportunity to put their equipment on BGMU pole. They, they try to let them do that. So we're going to, we're going to watch that and make, try to keep, keep an eye on the aesthetics of neighborhoods where you don't have these double poles sitting next to each other. And I think BGMU is going to help, help us keep an eye on that as well. Because most of these are inside the city and on older pole structures that these are, these things are going up on.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll call the roll. Eastly Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. We have a second reading at the next meeting. Ordinance BG 2020-20. Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Five to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2020 Motion by Wilkerson and Second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzol.
I am 99.9% sure this is the last budget amendment for FY '20. And what this one is, is basically to amend the budget for the coronavirus relief fund, funding that we are getting, the 4.9 million that we talked about earlier. Just amending budget for the, the increase in revenue that we're receiving and also to increase appropriation and we'll carry it over into FY '21 when we close the FY '20 books. Kay, you got anything to add on that?
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Eastly Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. We'll have a final reading on that at the next meeting. Or the second reading of ordinance BG 2020-17. Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 0.2433 acres from RM2, two-family residential to RS1D, single-family residential and highway business HB located at 816 Josephine Street, presently owned by Falcon of Gurkin LLC. Motion by Wilkerson, Second by Paragon. This is a unanimous recommendation with one abstention from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are there any other comments or questions? Joe?
Mayor, in case some don't know, that is the original minute mark property owned by Freddie Higgins and his dad at that time and great Bowling Green businessman.
Yes, sir. Anything else? I'll call the roll. Eastly Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That ordinance passes on its final reading. Next is ordinance, second reading of ordinance BG 2020 Number 18. Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter Two Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances to the Doc Flag Standards and Subchapter Two-1, General Provisions. Motion by Nash, Second by Wilkerson. The comments to head. Slim.
Limited comments. I just, the intent is to ensure that this doesn't occur again. And so I appreciate the 5-0 vote that was taken last time, last meeting. I hope that 5-0 vote will continue again today. I am disappointed in the response to the questions that I submitted to you, Mayor. Very few of the questions did you answer. And I'm still trying to figure out how to obtain the information. I'm still trying to figure out how one member of the Board of Commissioners can obtain information and then make a decision on behalf of the city and then not share that information with the remainder of the commission. So I'm pleased that the flag issue is getting behind us, but I still have grave concerns about the unilateral action of any member of the city commission. We are supposed to function as a group and share information within that group so that we can make decisions. That doesn't mean we can't have a difference of opinion, but it should mean that we all have the same amount of information at the same time. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Dana?
I just have a question for Gene. So the, the mayor sent his responses to the question Mayor Nash had asked at the last meeting. And several of the answers were that the information has not been authorized for release. And so I'm just, does that mean that we need to have a closed session in order to talk about this as a Board of Commissioners to get some of these answers? Or why do we proceed with that?
I, if you, I didn't catch who you asked that question of. I'm not too sure this would be a closed session discussion. I'm not sure I'm aware of any of the closed session exemptions that would apply to something like this. Hill and I will back and look. We'll look at the exemptions. But I would tell you, none to my mind jump out right now that would allow a closed session discussion on this topic.
So then, when I look at this, there are, there is, in terms of, we're the executive and legislative body. So there's some sensitive information that we will need to receive that is not for the public to receive as part of our position within the city. And so is there, if we're going to receive sensitive information, that can only be through written communication and we can't get together in a closed session? Is that what you're saying? We can't discuss it? It can only be communicated through a confidential document?
Well, I think you are, you're free, there's a difference between who you discuss things with. You're perfectly free under the Open Meetings Act to discuss items like this with the city manager. You start running into issues with closed meetings is if you start discussing items among yourself, then talk about the options and choices and decisions about how you're going to respond to it and then make decisions about yourself. But you can always discuss these kind of things with the city manager without violating the Open Meetings Act. It's the internal discussions among yourself that causes the issue. I do want to go back and, and with Hillary, we'll look at one. I know under open records, they've come back out with some like Homeland Security documents that we can keep out, but most of those deal with, I guess, citing like BGMU sites, locations and stuff like that. Although I will tell you, if we had gotten an open record request for these documents, we probably would have denied those open records due to the fact that there are some things that says we don't disclose documents that are provided as, they're not subject to disclosure by the federal or state law. I think we were being told that the documents, I think you've got one or two of them, were again provided not to be disclosed to anybody else, including the media because the sensitivity was in the documents. So we probably would not have disclosed those to the, to the general public or to the media with an open records request.
So you're saying that whenever situations like this arise, there is not a way for us to receive the information and discuss how we would respond as a city in a closed section?
Yeah, I will go back and look to see, make sure. Yeah, I will go back and look to see, make sure there's not one. I don't, you know, I've done these, you know, lots of times. I'm just not aware, and Ashley can, Hillary can jump in too. I'm just not aware off the top of my head right now and, oh, that an open meetings exception that would have been applicable to discussing, you know, this particular issue. Like I said, you, you're well within your abilities and authority though, um, to discuss that with the city manager. The city manager can talk, can talk to you guys individually about anything and everything. It's the, um, you know, it's when you all start acting as a group together, then when you're not together, where you start talking about issues and, well, did, you know, did you get this? What did you think about this? How you think we need to resolve it or how you think we need to respond? It's when the Board of Commissioners as a group, either groups of two, three, four, or five, when you start doing that among yourself, that the issues pop up.
Okay, thank you, Gene.
All right.
Any other comment? I'll call the roll. Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
We, we've lost future Nash.
Can I record his vote? Is yes, since he sponsored the vote and encouraged us all to vote for it?
I would do that.
She can't unmute, Ashley.
Press, you, you should be able to unmute too. Try again.
Okay, thank you. It said the moderator muted me. Yes.
Yes, okay. And Wilkerson is yes, so. Sorry that we all slammed in the situation, since he was a sponsor, he was supporting that. That's the last item on the agenda. No one signed up for public comments. And our next meeting is scheduled for August 4th, 2020. Thank you for tuning in.